There we go. All right, everyone. We got anybody on? Are we short of...
No, we're four. We're four, four, seven, six. All right, everyone.
...to the United States of America, and to the liberal political where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, for everyone, I thank, uh, thank you for coming for this, uh, what will be a very brief work session here on this. But I do, I, I appreciate it. I know it wasn't the, uh, the first thing on everybody's, on everybody's mind and including Jake and Robert here when they, when they asked us to do this. But I, you know, before something comes along that we don't know how to deal with, this is as good a thing as it is, it is. So Jake or one, or Robert, one of you, if you would just tell us...
Yeah.
Okay. If you would just, if you would just tell us why it is we have to come back here because of the Montana planning commission, what is it?
Right. So based on our review letter, uh, which the league has...
Is that March eleventh, that this one?
Correct.
Okay.
So they had no issues with it, insofar as, uh, you know, I mean, the policy being made. It was primarily just clerical, uh, items. But they're significant enough that any supposed change has to come be re-reviewed by both. So we sent back, uh, the ten correspondence now, and they said preliminarily it's okay, they're vote on it. But the changes were citation errors. There are a couple of spots where we missed renaming, uh, mixed use to major mixed use.
Okay.
So it was that. Uh, there were a couple definitions that were in the approved version but did not make the text of the approved version. Without like with the venture lodging that we had in there. And then consistency for small wireless communication facilities and wireless communication facility. Um, because we already had an ordinance that had those definitions were slightly different, so we made...
Do they, they all now match?
Correct. And then, um, uh, manufacturing and light manufacturing made the same definition. So, uh, they shifted it to demonstrate it was replacing an existing definition. And then, uh, another addition of renaming mixed use development. Um, we also, uh, changed, uh, we took the map part out of this ordinance because it's going to take an additional thirty days to get the mail and post everything. So because there's no significant map change, because it was just the six properties...
Yeah, we didn't add anything beyond that.
Right. So the thing is, we wanted to be able to get this done in April, at least the text, because people are gonna start building soon, and it's gonna start filing plans. Then we wanted to make sure that the text of the ordinance was correct, and there's no material loss to the people that are in the new zone. So we're doing that, and then...
Wait, sorry, just to understand, those six properties are included in the...
They, they will still be in it, but we're going to pass that separately.
Okay. So when this passes in April, it will not include this?
Right. This will just be the text.
And what are those six?
Uh, there were six on, uh, Independence Road. There were, there were six programs that were, reasons that those were left out of the E D zone, even though it's... Some of them were commercial inform and existing, and then others are unimproved. And then...
Not part of that, sorry.
No, that's not part of that, but no, that's where they were.
Oh, yeah. So these, and they, that was approved in the previous version that you did approve, but we took it out of this one to make the process clearer.
Got it.
Um, and then we also took out references to, uh, uh, density bonuses because the time was not clear. That might have been a residual thing from an older ordinance, and there was no clear definition. So we tried to make clear in the older one.
Yeah.
It wasn't, still wasn't clear enough to our liking, so we think we'd rather talk about that.
Yeah.
Rather not hold up the whole thing. And then the last change was just that, uh, no impact on base business was removed because there was no difference between that and the existing one.
What's the existing one? Low impact?
No, the existing one is no impact on base. It's, it's, it was just included as a second definition.
Yeah.
So it would do what changes we prepared after. Those, those are the twelve, uh, differences.
Yeah, that's it. Okay. So we'll come back to the map change later this summer probably. Right.
Yeah. I mean, I, I anticipate, probably even sooner just because it was already approved. We just wanted to do it...
Well, it's almost April, so it'll probably be the summer by then, to be honest with you, Jake.
Well, it'll probably be May.
Yeah, for sure. No, no, I gotta get, yeah, I understand that.
That's true. Tomorrow's, or, oh, yeah, but those, those are, that's the game plan.
That, that's the game plan. Okay. All right, gentlemen, any discussion on this? Comments and such? Chris, I know you were around at the beginning, at the beginning of this when we did, when we did the, you know, all the, all the heavy lifting on the, you know, on the, the major adjustments on it. Um...
Any other things, make sure Chris knows what I'm not sure to do?
Yeah.
The, the zone's already in place. All, this was already amended to fix a bunch of cases potentially.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's not a point. It's already, uh...
Okay. All right.
I like to say that because every time we have this conversation, I feel like we're just going back to...
Yeah, right. I understand.
Like that's already...
No, we're already here. No, it's, it is. It's, it's already...
Ship's sail.
That part of it is, is here, yeah.
Well, this is a work session, so do we, can the planning commission, your recommendations to the...
Yeah, that's what it's all about.
Mm-hmm. All right, I'm in.
Go ahead.
Steve and Rob, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the... There's no ordinance somewhere.
What you can do, Commissioner Albert is, or out there, is that in your packet, there's a letter from Julia...
Yeah, I'm looking for it here.
Date is March twenty five.
There it is.
And it takes the twelve items that have been, uh, addressed and corrected or changed. So if you wish, you could simply just say that...
They have been reviewed and...
You make the recommendations based upon the changes that were made by township office manager Julia Heilica, dated March twenty five, twenty twenty two, et cetera, et cetera.
Some moves.
And I'll say, and I will second that. Let's get, let's get it in place.
All right.
Any other discussion?
Interesting.
Yes.
It's pretty simple.
Yeah, this one, this, this one is, this is, this is really a procedural night, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's a, that's a four to, that's a four to zero there, Ron.
God.
Okay. So you guys are gonna approve it next month, the beginning, your first meeting?
Um, thirty, thirty days, uh, say, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, evidently.
It doesn't have to be thirty days, because it's not that it's a map. Our plan is, I don't, it's technically still be able to get it in for our meeting, uh, but it's not definitely business twenty seventh.
Okay.
Is there a couple of, of products in the pipeline that you're particularly worried about?
Not necessarily.
There was that one from, uh, Khan, Dr. Khan, Dr. ...
I assume that he'll probably utilize this to, to come up with something better than what...
But he had withdrawn the other one.
Yeah, but that one was gonna try to use on the loophole.
He was gonna try to use one of these, yes. He was gonna try to, to do the, you know, the, the seventy-five apartments and, uh, you know, vending machinery kind of crap.
I think he'll be, uh, for a while. I don't even think he's got an engineer to...
All right, all right.
Yeah, I think it's...
But it's not forming on the table, so it doesn't meet that criteria.
I mean, I, I...
It's not a pending.
It's more just that now, there's a good opportunity to build, so I figured, if we get it in place now... I mean, I, I, there isn't anything that I'd be concerned about at the moment. Most of the people that talked about anything that was concerning, they kind of disappeared. The only thing I know that's, that's coming down, I think, is bygone, because I got an email. I thought that was dead. Um...
No?
Yeah, I guess it's got that...
That's already approved, so I suppose it's, I don't know. I thought that deal was dead, but...
Yeah, I guess that...
Probably not the block.
Not block, but a little bit of bygone itself.
That one we talked about, the warehouse and...
That they're ready to start.
Hmm.
I'll send it to you, so you have... Just got like yesterday or the day before.
Yeah, no, I didn't know.
You're already approved because of our plan, but...
Oh, that one.
Looks so happy.
Well, it's, look, they're P R D. They do what, they could do whatever. What I don't understand is how they can, I'm not really sure how, or settlement agreement.
We're also direct to the individuals that are involved. I, I suppose that I guess settlements, not all of them are restricted by the judges that...
It's not even so much the judges. I'm just not sure how they can, how a settlement agreement can, can order a township to otherwise do some, I don't, anyway, I, you know what? Because I'm not even getting into it, because that ain't on my dime. I'm not, I'm not doing that one.
It predates all of this.
Yeah, that predates, yeah, that does predate all of that.
The only supervisor missed in the last forty years is Jason Sartori. Yeah. Yeah, everybody else has to approve it or do something about it.
Yeah, really.
This goes back to nineteen eighty nine.
Yeah. As a freshman in college, when that showed up.
When was the lawsuit, when was the lawsuit, Tom?
In the, uh, early two thousands, and it ended up in the mid two thousands, is ultimately when it was settled.
Yeah, yeah, that one was oh nine.
Settlement says, the settlement says they can turn to the two thousand and five, I might have...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how that works, but it's...
Right, that's what I mean. I'm not sure how that works either, but...
I thought it was much stronger than...
Well, that's their problem.
The township signed off on it, so, so that makes it a little more difficult. Township can sign off, you can say exactly as the chair said. Can't tell me what to help. Do I sign that agreement?
I'd sign that agreement, right.
Not between you guys. With the township signing it, the plan that it's talking about, signed off on before any of us were here. And it was, it was signed off in two thousand and nine or whatever it was.
No, two thousand and five.
Yeah.
Well, I gotta tell you, I am glad that we were proactive here on this one. Could you please...
Get out the loophole, so we don't get something accidentally stuck in our ear.
Yeah. The only other thing that we will, uh, talk about, yeah, that's not in the year, um, is we're gonna have the nuisance, but I'd like to get that done before the, the summer. We have sort of a, any ordinance contract based on stuff, Ron, and stuff, Robert came up with, so we hope to talk about that, yeah.
How you guys, the next one, do you?
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm true, but summer time, right?
You guys gonna join the land bank? I know we chatted about it before.
We haven't heard anything back from them yet, so, but, but, but we, we have every intention of doing...
Yeah, that's what I figured. Okay.
Yeah. I got a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, uh, that Aqueduct that goes from, uh, Delaware dams for upstream into New York City is being closed on October thirty first. Six, six months. You guys are aware of it?
Yeah, very much.
Did you, did any of you attend the information session last week?
Will they get more flooding because...
Well, so the big concern is that they're not, they've been really concerned about how they're gonna get water into New York and have done very, very little, if anything, to add what their ramifications will be downstream. And we're talking about a massive amount of water that is normally siphoned off of that dam that's going to come downstream. So all the agreements that are presently in place, the tripartite agreement between, um, New York, Pennsylvania, and New Jersey, um, were changed a number of years ago after we had got all those floods to force more water to be let out during drier periods so that there is, uh, greater space. Um, ideally, they would temporarily amend that so there would be more, but they haven't done that. There's no indication that...
Is there, is there any, is there any plan to draw down the Cannonsville and those, those reservoirs?
My understanding is there's almost no, that all, they haven't really done appropriate modeling, um, and it's really kind of scary, because it could be completely devastating. I mean, we're talking about...
Well, the margin of error is, would be, would be like this is the problem, yes.
So, but right now with no planned changes, it's just a, a big deal. I mean, we, I raised it with Susan Wild and with, uh, Maris Cuffelo, and, um, I just realized, as I was sitting here, I was like, I never mentioned it to the...
I'd be great if, you know, urgency management planning, so, I mean, if they have anything in...
I think you guys should...
I mean, it's all, it really is...
Authorize Ron to institute U.S. Supreme Court original process of Pennsylvania versus New York over water.
It, it should be the...
And I think you should do that. I'll help you.
Okay, good. That's good, because that's not the curveball coming in like I'm not, you're always patting my glove, you know, not one for those third base deals.
But that's what hap, but that's where those things, quite as funny as it is, that's where those...
Yeah.
That's where they are. They, uh...
The U.S. Supreme Court has original jurisdiction in cases between states.
Yeah, it's really hard.
And has, but it happens.
It happens down western water.
I am actually looking at getting a conjunction put in.
It also happened with, uh, Liberty Island, um...
None of the states, yeah. I heard about this from John Donahue.
It's really, really scary.
How many dams are on the Delaware River up north to here?
Three is this one.
Yeah, just that one?
No.
And it's not a complete...
No, no, no. There are a couple of, yeah.
Well, what, how do they get, how do they draw water off the Delaware to New York?
No, it doesn't go in.
Oh.
Yeah, it's the east branch of the Delaware River.
Right.
And that's where the Cannonsville particular reservoir, they want...
No, it's not, it's not the main branch.
Whenever we've had flooding, massive flooding, it's always related to damp release issues.
Because New York City te, likes to keep it, they're always worried about the drought that never comes in the northeast, because we're, you know, with the Saudi Arabian water.
And as, as all of the utilities have gotten more efficient and the population is the same, because you can't add people to Manhattan. Um, and there's, actually, the, the man for water continues to decrease in New York City.
I remember, I think, a week or two before one of the bigger storms, uh, all of last summer. A week or two before one of the bigger storms, all of last summer, it had a big release and we were getting concerned about that, you know, a planned release.
We had sixty, as you know, we had sixteen inches on Halloween, but we had in the brewery, um, and that was a twenty-three feet. But we're looking, I mean, the big ones were thirty-six feet and we're just, we're quite near, all, any of the property along.
Anybody, any property.
Anyone along Delaware River should be concerned. All the way, I mean, we, we, I sent a message to the mayor of Easton to let it. I don't know, because Easton could be underwater, honestly. Uh, anyway, I didn't know.
In big, in big floods, it's gone.
Under and over the Free Bridge at Easton Philbrook. It's gone up that high.
Yeah.
I've seen it down there.
I understand at a township level that can.
Incredible.
At a township level that can be.
Wow, I mean, it's better had by being here when we can express concern. I mean, there's, there's a big concern, not just for the, for amongst the properties along the river. So, I mean, you know, I, I threw an email on there, you know, speaking from.
That'd be good.
They've got anything.
Problem is, they've been pretty quiet about it and so a lot of people just have no idea that it's happening.
Yeah, and then of course everyone's going to find out.
I want to make sure that everyone knows so that when they didn't do, don't do anything and then there's a massive problem that someone can, somebody that's supposed to have done something.
Like, educate me again here just for a moment, the release of the water is supposed to do what?
So the problem is, what, what happens is when they, when they keep the reservoirs at like ninety percent and then there's massive, um, snow melt, fall by rain. All the river goes up ten feet, right? But then because they're going to overflow this, they open the spillways, they open the floodgates and instead of going to fifteen feet, we go to forty feet. And so the idea is there should be a, an amount, so there was a renegotiation of that agreement. Meaning that they weren't supposed to keep it at drier times about, I don't know what the numbers were, certain percentages at certain times of the year. They have to let more water out of those reservoirs down, um, down the river so that there's enough of a buffer in there so that when there is a massive storm, they don't have to release it at the same time.
I, I'm sorry to be sick about this, but those reservoirs are not on the Delaware proper.
Yes, they are. They're on the east branch of the Delaware River, yeah.
East branch of the Delaware.
It's up there in New York State where the river goes this way.
Yeah, is that a tributary?
They come together, yes, it drains down to the Cassels.
And we, that's why we see a twen, we know twenty-four hours in advance.
And where's the last one?
Downriver, near Roscoe, up there.
It's the trout fishing area of the upper Delaware because they're, uh, because that's where, because the water releases, especially in Cannonsville, are tailwater, they're bottom, they're bottom releases. And that's why from, basically from Roscoe, you get out into Hancock, New York and Deposit, New York, you have, you know, brown trout and, and.
Rainbow trout that live like this because the water temperature is regulated by that outflow. But the thing is, if you look on the Delaware River Basin Commission website, it'll show you, it'll show you the number of billions of gallons stored and the percentage of storage and so forth. And th, th, those reservoirs are routinely kept at over ninety-five percent full. And so you don't have that, that flood absorption property that they were supposed to have. So when it looks like the dam is going to have to be overtopped, like in nineteen ninety-six, they throw open the floodgates and basically destroy the entire Delaware Valley, you know. Honestly, down to Trenton and everywhere because it dumps so much, they dump so much spill water in, plus everything that comes in from the side.
And it's supposed to be October, they're supposed to close down the Aqueduct enough.
I think they're, I think they're trying to do it after a hurricane season like we have this, but still.
No, I know, I know, it's a six month period, but it's still a period where we have floods in the past, we've had some more resplendent.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, the, the, the one in nineteen ninety-six was the end of January.
There's a lot of high pressure, yeah, closely one of the main aqueducts in the city because they have to repair it.
That's it, that's the concern. That six month period when they're repairing that, and no one's saying they shouldn't have to repair it. But what we're saying is you have to adjust your mitigation strategies around how much volume of water you're allowed to keep in there because you're not pulling it up anymore. And massive amounts of water that's not going to be pulled out of that reservoir. And they haven't sort of done the modeling properly as far as we, we feel. So I don't know if there's anything that, I just, not really, shouldn't have necessarily done it from this side of the table, should have been asking, but.
No, no, it's, it's a, I mean, well, that's not, you know, planning and form, I mean, that's important.
Well, if you can reach out to Monroe, I would be very surprised if the county was doing anything. I mean, Susan Wild's office had no idea, the Wild's office had no idea what's happening.
I'll, I'll, I'll see if they do. I'll, I'll let you know what, what I.
Yeah. All right, that's it. I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second it.